City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Yeah.
Alderman Burrz.
Yeah.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
No.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, September 22, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's public announcements. I am sorry to report on the death of Sixth Ward Alderman from 1965 to 1973. Craig J. Kane died at age 91. He served for three years in the U.S. Naval Reserve during World War II, graduated from Dartmouth, was elected an Alderman in Evanston for eight years, serving as Chairman of the Council Committee on Committees and Acting Mayor. He had a long history of community service in Evanston and a terrific career as a businessman, and we are very sorry to announce his death. Family service will be held in Illinois at a later date. I'm happy to report that Northwestern University won their football game on Evanston Day and Evanston Township High School won their football game. Also, I attended Day-Day World, and it was a terrific celebration of kids and activities. That concludes my public announcements. City Manager, do you have any?
I do not.
Thank you. And City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We have a large number of people signed up for Citizen Comment, and I am doing math If you each speak for two minutes, we should be able to get through it in 45 minutes. I'm going to call the first four names. Please come up and give your name and address. Marty Kleves, Barbara Janes, Sigrid Pilgrim, and Junad Riske.
Can I start?
Go right ahead.
I want to thank everybody for letting me speak. There's a lot of people who've been here talking about the need for Harley-Clark to be kept in the public domain, and they've been very eloquent about that, so I'm not going to really speak to that but let you know that I support it. What I'm here to talk about is maybe to suggest a mechanism for keeping it in the public domain, which is a conservation and building easement. I don't know if the city government has considered that. I've been very active in the environmental movement for years. It's a practice that the IDNR is very familiar with, and I hope that you consider it. I mean, I think it's a move forward that you're only selling the building and not the land, but there's still a question about the building. It's possible that you can put the building into the public domain through a building easement. It involves working with NGOs to create a trust, that the building could go in the trust, and then it's off. You don't have the responsibility for it anymore, but it stays in the public domain. I think that might be one solution that would make everyone happy. I know personally that the IDNR has worked with many of these NGOs for a long time. It's not a new concept, and it's been done many times before, so I urge you all to think about doing that.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Barbara Janes, 802 Colfax Street. I am here again tonight to discuss the proposed ordinance that would direct the City Manager to enter negotiations with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to buy the Harley-Clark Mansion and lease the parkland surrounding the building. While my personal preference would be for the city to retain control of both the mansion and parkland, the building needs to be, if the building needs to be sold, certain conditions must be met. Some of these points are repeats of the email that I sent to each one of you. First, it is important that you, the City Council, give the City Manager firm guidelines on provisions that must be in the final agreement. Looking at the proposed ordinance in your packet, I do not see that any of the ideas presented by citizens in the previous meetings are included. I hope that you're listening. Section 2 of the proposed ordinance sets forth guidelines for the City Manager to follow, two sections I think need some work. Section 2 reads, "Provisions shall be included that stipulate that the current and future uses of the buildings by the State of Illinois." It is important that this section clearly states that the building will always, and the land, will always remain in the public domain for public use. The use of the building by the coastal management program certainly meets those criteria. Section 6 reads, "Provisions shall be included that allow the City of Evanston first right of ownership of the buildings should IDNR leave." This condition in no way provides the insurance that if IDNR wants to leave the building in the future, that the building will revert to the City of Evanston. There must be a statement saying that it shall revert to Evanston. Well, how can we ask that the building revert to the City of Evanston at no cost? This is a way that I see that we can do it. Since all the money involved in buying, in selling, and rehabbing the building will be public money, why not do this? Sell the building to IDNR for $1 or $5. Assure that IDNR rehabs the building to meet our standards and their needs.
Barbara, I do need you to wrap up.
I'm trying to hurry.
Okay.
Publicly stated, cost estimates range from $2 million to anywhere up to $5 million, which is very, very high. If IDNR decides to vacate the building, then the building would automatically revert to the city at no cost, and at most $5. And I'll put it in my will that you can have $5 to buy it if need be.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Barbara, I really do need you to wrap up.
And secondly, there's got to be time before the Council votes to have a public discussion on the conditions that have been negotiated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sigrid.
Thank you. My name is Sigrid Pilgrim. I live at 2750 Bear Narre Place, about the farthest northwest corner of Evanston you can possibly think of. First of all, I would like to congratulate you and everybody else in our city for having been nominated the fifth most livable place of cities of our size in the United States. I firmly believe that part of what made us give that award is our lakefront and our parks and open spaces, so let's see if we can retain those and hopefully move up to maybe place four or five. In any event, my comments here are solely directed at the sale of the Harley-Clark Mansion buildings, since you have already indicated that you will only lease the grounds surrounding it. As Barbara mentioned, and I believe that I have already expressed this in an email to all of you previously, I would like you to consider the sale of the building at a price of $1. My reasoning is as follows. The current value of the building to the city is really zero, considering that the city does not have the funds required to rehabilitate the structure for any potential future city programs or any other public entity use. Furthermore, in the event that there is no potential buyer, or let's see, that can be identified whose use of the building would be compatible with the lakefront master plan, it could force you to dismantle the structures. In this event, the city would face considerably, possibly six-figure costs to do so. The sale price of the Harley-Clark Mansion should not be determined based on the potential use of the buildings. That potential use of the buildings, whether by the IDNR or any other public entity, will carry with it significant rehabilitation costs, an expenditure that is not borne by the city but by the building's acquirer. Therefore, as mentioned, I propose that City Council direct City Manager to negotiate the sale of the Harley-Clark Mansion and the associated building to IDNR for $1, with a stipulation that should IDNR or the State of Illinois vacate the property for whatever reason, the buildings would revert back to the City of Evanston to remain in public ownership for continued public use. Barbara has already mentioned that. Thus far, public funds were involved through which the building was acquired by the City of Evanston, at least that is my belief. Public funds will be used by IDNR for rehabilitation. Thus, the building needs to be retained by the public in perpetuity.
Sigrid, I need you to wrap up, please.
Yeah, I have one more sentence. There are other reasons why I believe that a sale price of $1 to IDNR would be appropriate, as I have outlined in my prior email to you dated September 13. Copy attached, and thank you all to those of you who have responded to that email. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riske.
Junad Riske, I'm going to speak on four topics very quickly. The Arts Center loan, frankly, there's so many people keep getting loans and money here with no collateral. This is not unique to the situation. It's just another loan the city may, Mayor may not give, but there's many, I think, other things here tonight that we don't have money to give away, but we keep giving, so we'll see where we end up in several years. As far as Mr. Bobkowitz's contract, he was given an outstanding performance thing, but I guess when you represent the interest of public officials over citizens, it could be a possible reason. But one of my concerns in the whole thing, and I felt that it's ridiculous, is the state that the general fund rate never went up, and when frankly, all the other rates go up of all the other funds, the money's just moved around. That's not an accomplishment to switch money around, so, I mean, maybe it is, I guess, but that's what's happening. As far as the Civic Center parking lot, I suspect you're going to have problems there in a few years with that, the way, as I look at it, but we'll wait. Time will tell with what you're doing there. It's pretty interesting. I think after some weather cycles, you may have some real problems. And finally, the other item that I thought was rather nonsensical is train car derailments and hazardous waste in Evanston. It looks like political things from the Mayor, but frankly, if we're really concerned about the environment and what's going on here, we ought to be interested in what happened for the two fires at the junkyard over here, basically, and why the City Council isn't conducting an inquiry when all these fumes went around town and basically people had to breathe them in. I would be asking questions of our Evanston Fire Department Inspection Services and what's going on over there. I think the Council has a bigger obligation to that than worrying about railcars that don't come through our community with waste on them. I think public officials ought to be a little more responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Herb Harms, Mike Fasilco, Carla, I apologize, Danudo, and Carol Build.
Yeah, I'm Herb Harms, 2133 Crawford Avenue in Evanston. I just want to make a comment about the Harley-Clark Mansion. I would really not want to see Evanston spend millions of dollars refurbishing and fixing up that mansion. I mean, that mansion was designed for single-family use, and I think that it's not conducive to beachgoers or parkgoers, and I think it would be really bad for us to waste money, millions of dollars refurbishing that when it's not designed for use for the public. If people go down to the beach or down to the park 25 years from now, I don't think they'd like to look over and say, "Oh, look at that beautiful, that beautiful old mansion over there." I think they'd rather look at some, maybe a smaller building and say, "There's some usage for us. It's compatible to our beachgoing and parkgoing, and there's things in that building that we can use, and it's conducive to the parkgoers and the beachgoers." So I don't think, I think it would be completely unwise to spend all that money on that old building. Take it down and let more park, more beachland, more parkland, or maybe put up a smaller building there, which would be conducive to the park and the beach, you know, usage for those people. And maybe even you could put up a little, or maybe a sizable deck, like they have up at Glencoe. You ever see that deck they have? A nice little deck that overlooks, people can overlook the beach, and you have something like that there. But anyway, I really hope that Evanston does not waste, spend that money, that huge amount of money refurbishing that building. I really hope they don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Fasilco, 2728 Reece Avenue, Evanston. Three items on Agenda Item 04. I just object to the City of Evanston handing out millions of dollars of city money to rich for-profit companies like the O'Donnell Investment Company. Item A3.2, I wrote to Alderman Tindham earlier today requesting that he request that that item be pulled off the agenda. This is the La Cota contract with two other firms. I think if the city is serious about encouraging and providing opportunities for minorities and women-owned businesses, we should really force the issue when it comes to selecting firms that apply for RFPs. You know, it's counterintuitive to me to have that in our requirements for MBWBE firms and let that be circumvented by hiring a company that has 74% of their contract going to two other companies that happen to have an office in Evanston, but none of them are minority businesses or women-owned businesses. On Agenda Item H2, I wholeheartedly support allowing the City Manager to negotiate the sale of the Harley-Clark Building with the IDNR. The city is clearly not interested in spending any serious amount of money on repairing the building, so we're fortunate, I think, and we should be allowing the IDNR to renovate or restore parts of the building that they can. We shouldn't make it any more financially difficult for them. We should allow the building to be sold, as others have said here, for a few token dollars and whatever the lease of the property, of the land around it that they use at a very low and reasonable amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carla Danudo, and these are my children. This is Stella. She's age six. This is Sebastian, age 11. And we're here to let you all know that we're very excited and really would love Little Beans to come to Evanston. We are big Little Beans fans in Chicago. Both my kids love it. Coming to Evanston and having both Little Beans and Big Beans in the same location could really help someone like me. I'm a single mom. I know a lot of my other friends who are moms love it. There'll be things for both ages. They promote active play. They'll have a half-court for basketball, tutoring, things for pretty much every single age from zero to 12. And then there's also going to be things for parents. When they bring their kids, if they didn't want to drop off, they could stay. Things like yoga, dads could watch football. There's just parts for the whole family to enjoy together or to drop off. The drive-through is going to be amazing to have shakes and coffee and be able to go right through and grab what you need when you drop off or stay and leave. And both my kids just really love it there, and so I really want to see it come to Evanston.
I'm very excited for Little Beans. Little Beans is awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
One more quick thing. These kids just got off a plane three hours ago from North Carolina and did not want to miss this, so that you would know how much they love Little Beans.
Try to beat that, Carol.
I know. This is a very tough act to follow. I just forgot completely what I was going to say. Anyway, I'm Carol Build. I live at 1404 Lincoln, and I'm talking in support of Little Bean Cafe. And after being a Realtor for 28 years, I can speak from experience that having an empty building that's been sitting there for so long is really a blight on the neighborhood. And it is a very vibrant area, and adding this can only add to the property values. And I know there's been some concern that it's just family-oriented, that there's going to be a cafe with coffee, a drive-through, things that everybody can come to enjoy, not just the little kids. And I think that it will definitely improve things. When I have a buyer, I suggest they drive around the neighborhood, and if they drive around this neighborhood and see an empty building, that obviously doesn't create a positive impression, so it would add great value. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pat Valco, Shannon Moffett, Carrie Shunyung, and Linda Damaschek.
Good evening. I'm Pat Valco, and I am probably illegally speaking in front of you because I am a former Evanston resident. You are welcome. Thank you. I am Shannon Valco's mother-in-law. She's married to my oldest son, Drew, and so I'm here, obviously, in support of her and quite biased. I'm also a former Evanston teacher for 29 years, and I would like to just say that my experience with Little Beans is that the only time I've seen children cry is when their parents are taking them home. So it is a wonderful opportunity for kids and families to be together. I currently live in Chicago, not too far from Little Beans, off of Western and Indian Boundary Park, and drive by the vacated building quite often and have for all of these years. It would be wonderful to see a lovely, family-centered business that would be there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Shannon Moffett. My address is 2206 Hartzell. I'm speaking on behalf of Little Beans Cafe tonight. For 13 years, I lived in South Evanston, walking distance from the old ASCO. I would shop there. I watched it closed, and then I waited for eight years to see what would happen. I can tell you that the residents around the area were glad that we didn't have an auto parts store. We were sad when Trader Joe's said no, when other grocers, the grocery, other grocery stores didn't go through. And the thought of a Little Beans there could not be better. It's exactly what the immediate neighborhood needs, as well as all of Evanston. So anything that needs to be done, we will rally all the mothers, all the parents, to make this happen. We've waited a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carrie Shunyung, and I'm at 2536 Marcy, and I'm here in support for Little Beans Cafe. It is a great revenue opportunity for the city. It supports the entrepreneurial spirit, which we really should be focused on, a woman-owned business, and again, it's a destination for families with children, a range of children, young and old, that can participate in active community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Damaschek. Back to the Harley-Clark. I have some specific suggestions for changes to the ordinance tonight, so I'll leave it with Clerk when I'm finished. So on Section 2.6, where it's talking about right of refusal for the city, I'm requesting that the City Council make a motion to amend the ordinance this evening to read, "Provisions shall be included to require the City of Evanston to resume ownership of 2603 Sheridan Road in perpetuity should the State of Illinois wish to vacate the building in the future." So that's just some word changes. Then I also have a point that I would like you to make a motion to amend the ordinance this evening, which is an addition. That is an additional provision to read, "The ordinance shall contain a provision for the deed to contain a right of reversion to the City of Evanston should the State of Illinois no longer occupy the property for public purposes." So it would just revert back to the city, put it in the deed. So thank you for considering these, and I hope that one of you will consider making that amendment to the ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our American Voice group, the McGaw Y.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, City Manager, City Clerk, and Madam Mayor, my name is Deavion Hunt. I'm a resident of the Second Ward and a member of our American Voice. In OAV, we met a lot of people that impact our community. We learned a lot about Evanston that we did not know. We came to understand that the whole community has to work together. It's not just the Mayor who makes the decisions. We can and we should. The issue that mattered the most to us was the violence in our neighborhood. It affects our community and, most of all, the youth. We met the Mayor and talked about a lot, sorry, we met the Mayor and we talked about a lot of different topics, but the main topic that stuck out was the Text-a-Tip program. We had never heard of it, and neither had anyone we knew. The reason why we are here tonight is to introduce our project to you, which will inform Evanston youth about the Text-a-Tip. We know that people are scared to tell what they know, but if the police can gather evidence, they can make their cases. We are going to hang copies of this poster at Open Gym in the bathrooms, at Family Focus, and in the Y, and with the city's permission, we would like to hang this poster in parks, at Fleetwood Jordan, and other places where young people would see them. We know that the success of the community and individual rely on each other. Each of us has to help police to get this evidence, and we want to help get the word out. We also want to honor Dejai Coleman, also known as Day-Day, on the anniversary of his passing by doing what we can to make all of us safe. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, as senior member of the Council, I would ask for personal privilege, and that is, I move that they be allowed to post their posters in parks and other public places.
So it's second, Matt.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, that's one of my little church members. I'm so excited for you.
They did a terrific job when they came here and talked to me about city issues.
Great.
So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
But Madam Mayor, if anybody can text.
Junad Riske and Peggy Tar are next.
Non-Agenda Topics. Recently, public officials and city staff attended an event called the Mashup. I would like to know if any taxpayer money was spent on this event, and if so, is that, and no doubt came under the $20,000 rule. I'd like to know who got the tickets, if any tickets, and who paid for the tickets for that event. If taxpayer money was used with our staff involved in this event and our staff spending their time working on this event, I'd like to know that as a taxpayer, because I feel public officials and city employees paying for food and drink at a private event isn't in the taxpayer's interest to use our money. So if it was used, I'd like to know how much was used and what was going on here. Although I have to admit, several years ago, you all attended the Mashup, and we attended the budget hearing, the few of us citizens, which I thought was a very good budget hearing, frankly, so, and maybe has a good purpose. Let me now talk about the budget. While we stated- Wally stated he wants to cut 3%. I really like to know why this 3% has to be cut if things are going so well at the city, and what he needs the money for. So I would like to know that. Also, as far as we have a net sale of water, I read, of $500,000 to displaced. So I'm going to assume, when we go into the budget hearing, we're not going to increase water bills, because you have $500,000. Of course, I'm not sure if that's truly net or not. And finally, at the last budget hearing, the Water Department brought its -- basically, its rate increases at the very last meeting. It's time that the Water Department be held accountable to bring its things up front to the meetings in the beginning. So there is time for public discussion and public looking into these matters. As we all know, there's a report being done for $80,000 of our money on the water tank. And frankly, at the last meeting, I don't want to see that pop up where the taxpayers might be in for a 20% water bill increase, or more possibly, to replace things. And you'd sit there and you basically pass it on through to us without any discussion in time. So that frankly needs to be brought up sooner, not later. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peggy Tar. I live at 907 Sherman Avenue. And as tired as I am of coming to you to complain about the same problem, I'm here again. Before I read a little of what I read, I understand that the new exercise center that's supposed to open, that they're going to have some restrictions about noise, that's not really helping us yet. We still have a problem with noise, so much so that one of the instructors at Revolution Spin, and I should say is now called Revolution X, because apparently Revolution Spin wasn't a part of a franchise, that you could actually hear them around the corner on Main Street, at least three buildings west of Sherman Avenue. Now, the Evanston Municipal Code 9-5-20 states, and I quote, "It shall be unlawful for any person within the city to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures" -- it says injuries -- "or endangers the comfort, repose, convenience, health, peace, or safety of others within the limits of the city." On August 12th, during the Evanston hearing for July 5th noise violation ticket written by an Evanston police officer against a Revolution Spin instructor, the Evanston Administrative Hearing Officer clarified that the July 5th ticket was against the individual instructor, not the Revolution Spin business. Revolution Spin owner Bressler passed a copy of Police Chief Eddington's undated letter about a decibel reading on July 12th to the hearing officer, who accepted the chief's letter as evidence that the decibel reading on July 5th was acceptable. I pointed out to the hearing officer that the date of the noise violation was different from the date of the decibel reading, and that the decibel reading was done during a class that's always quiet. My statements did not matter. In spite of the fact that a police officer had heard and ticketed the Revolution Spin instructor for a noise violation on July 5th, not July 11th, the hearing officer ruled that the Revolution Spin instructor was not guilty of a noise violation. And I'm going to skip some of this and go to the bottom. I talked with Alderman Wilson today, and I've got to say, my conversation was rather disappointing. I have tapes of the noise coming from Revolution X, as it is called, into my apartment. And there are other people besides my neighbor and me that are disturbed by noise from Revolution X, but are afraid, unwilling, or too pessimistic to complain. It's too bad the City of Evanston allows this matter to escalate. And I'm going to say again, I'm glad that there's some sound, some noise, rules put into this new place. It's not helping us. I can hear the noise in my kitchen, which is at least 110 feet away. I can go outside into the parking lot and hear them. Now, I expect more of the City of Evanston than I'm getting.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Next is Special Order of Business, the Evanston Art Center.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. You have in your packet tonight a letter on page 11 from Nora Dietrich, the Executive Director of the Evanston Art Center. Ms. Dietrich is here with us this evening. And Ms. Dietrich, rather than perhaps me reading the letter out loud, perhaps you could just come before the council and let us know your request.
Thank you all very much for your time and attention this evening. All of us at the Art Center really appreciate it. Just a little bit of background on where we got to where we are. In April, we identified a building at 1717 Central Street, which we found to be extremely perfect for our next home. In July, July 8th, to be exact, we signed a purchase-sales agreement with the owner of that building. By the end of July, we had gathered together some printed materials to launch a capital campaign and started our fundraising efforts on the building. In that period of time also, we started a number of due diligence tasks, which we have completed to date. And just a little bit of an update on our fundraising efforts. In a little over 10 weeks, we have collected in campaign contributions $1,600,000. We have an additional $115,000 due to us by May 1, 2015. Of the 188 people who have contributed, there are two anonymous $500,000 gifts, three $100,000 gifts, and 16 at $10,000 or more. These contributions will be earmarked for the renovation for 1717 Central Street. The architect, the Tom Dobbins Group, who worked on the Royce Moore School, has not yet done final drawings. They will start to work on that this coming week. We expect an additional $100,000 in pledge payouts that will come due over the next two years. And additionally, we hope to ask one of the higher-level donors to pay early on a gift, and that would also allow us to collect another $50,000 in two years. We're really thrilled with this effort. We haven't been at it long. This organization has not done a capital campaign since the '40s. They bought a building for $60,000. So we're thrilled, we're encouraged, and we have many, many more asks out in the very near future. We have received a loan from First Bank and Trust for the purchase of the building. We're also encouraged that our bank, our city's bank, community bank, trusts us, knows that we will be able to run a really, really fabulous program at 1717 Central Street. And we're thrilled with that support. We are asking the city tonight to please consider a loan, short-term, if that's what works best, to bridge the gap between what we have from First Bank and Trust and what we need to close on this building. We have an intense timeline, we have throughout this whole process, of October 6th. We have to close on or before October 6th. It's the end of our due diligence period, which we've extended by a month. And the city, First Bank and Trust, is allowing the city to take a second position on this loan. And we sincerely hope the city will allow us to move, help us to move. We will pay back this loan through contributions to our capital campaign as we continue to fundraise and money from our reserves. We're happy to send the city manager any of our information, financial information. We have a short-term and a 10-year financial projection, which shows you and showed the First Bank and Trust folks what we can project in terms of operating income. And I'm happy to send you whatever else you need, and happy to answer any questions if I can.
Alderman Bruce.
This is actually a question from Mr. Bobkowitz. Is there a reason why this didn't come to a committee first? I find this very unusual, that it's coming directly to council. We've had no time to really vet this in a committee. There's basically zero documentation. Even when businesses come for loans, we go to economic development, we go through their background, their finances. So I just don't understand why we would go out of protocol for this amount of money. So that's my question to you. And the second question, you may or may not know this. The loan from First Bank and Trust, is there a cosigner on that loan for the Art Center? So is someone else, another entity, actually backing up that loan? Thanks.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, maybe Ms. Dietrich could answer the second question. I don't have an answer to the second question.
No, there is no backup on the loan. They have given the Art Center the loan, yeah. Right.
And the answer to the first question, Alderman Bruce, if you'll notice, the letter was dated September 17th. It came in on Wednesday. I conferred with Mayor Tisdale and asked what her preference was, either to bring it to one of the standing committees this evening or to the full council. And it was her request to bring it to the full council.
And I did that because there's a timeframe that they're operating under. They need the money by when is it, October 6?
Yeah, I guess that was -- my point was--
I agree with you. It's not the usual custom.
Right. And it's the idea of giving money to an organization, be it a business, a not-for-profit, that's not planning ahead. And I think that that's a problem that, you know, how long have you known the organization's leaving their location and putting things together, and then suddenly now showing up and saying, "Oh, we absolutely need this, and we need to make a decision tonight," with zero documentation. I just don't understand how we can continue to do this kind of back-and-forth with the not-for-profits that aren't coming in with more information, they're asking us for money, last minute, "Oh, my gosh, we're in serious trouble." There needs to be more planning on the board's part for these not-for-profits. It just continues to be a concern for me, and hopefully it is for the other people on the council as well.
Can I then--
And Alderman Bruce, just so you're clear, the request this evening is direction. I agree and understand with everything you've said. Given our long relationship with the Art Center and the timing the letter was received, I wanted it to get before you. But we're not asking for any action tonight, we're only asking for direction.
We also, if I might add one point, for eight months, we have been working and going down a path for financing for this building. Last Monday, we found out that that was not going to go through. This is not something that we brought to you, you know, willy-nilly. We just found out literally a week ago that the plan we had for financing the purchase was not going to happen. And that's why we're here tonight.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich. And you've got to be glad to have First Bank and Trust on board at this point.
Absolutely, yeah.
Usually, when the city provides loan funding, short-term, like a bridge loan is what you're asking for, a bridge loan to get you past the purchase. And usually, the city requires the presentation provision of finance documents, balance sheets, finance statements, that kind of thing.
Right.
Can you provide that to us with some dispatch, then?
Absolutely, first thing in the morning. Yes, we have it ready.
And in the meantime, $1.6 million in 10 weeks, sounds like 40 years of pent-up giving. And people seem to be glad to be asked at this point, and it suggests to me that maybe you have some real momentum there.
I think we do.
Congratulations on $1.6 million, another $115,000 by May 1st, you said?
Correct.
Plus another pledge. So the $1.6 million is in the bank?
Correct.
In the bank already. And then another $100,000 pledge for -- plus $50,000, so another $150,000 pledged over two years.
Correct.
Would you be comfortable with a shorter-term loan?
If that's the terms, then we will go by that--
Make that work.
-- and pay it back in time. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Okay. Could you just restate your short term, what your term is again? When you intend to pay it back?
Well, we don't know what the city considers a short term. We don't -- is it 20 -- is it two years? Is it, I mean--
What did you have in mind, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
You know, I think that a two-year was mentioned, and if that's what the city is comfortable with, that's what we'll make work.
Purchase price is $2 million. You're willing to give a mortgage for the $500,000 second-position mortgage?
Correct.
Alderman Wilson, are you done?
I guess.
I'm sorry.
I'm just--
I'm trying.
I'm mowing, so--
Alderman Fisk.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Those were the questions I was going to ask. What we're being asked to do tonight is to give city manager direction, is that correct, Wally? I can support that, but we obviously need a lot more information. If you can get that to us in a very speedy way, that would be very helpful. My question, last question for you, is that did you reach out to any of your donors to ask whether, or to anyone else, asking whether they would be willing to do this loan for you? I don't feel entirely comfortable with the city being anything other than the place where you go for a request last.
Well, because we have been in a fundraising mode, we have a lot of asks out there for the campaign. And we also will begin our annual campaign for operating. Those letters go out in November. So we have one or two individuals who still could be asked. They probably will not loan us the entire $500,000. They're just not capable of doing that. But we are, you know, continuing our campaign, and we think that's the best way to go forward to actually raise the most amount of money. So that being said, yes, there is one or two individuals who we will get to. And thank you.
Yeah, I also really want to be encouraging to you, because I think your plan, the building that you've selected, the energy that's going to bring to Central Street meshes really nicely with our plans for Central Street. But we need more information, clearly.
Sure, I understand.
Alderman Rainey.
Mr. City Manager, where is the $500,000 coming from?
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, I think there's probably a variety of funding sources within the city, especially if we're talking about a short-term period of time. So I would think that either the Economic Development Fund, which I think has sufficient resources for something that would not exceed 24 months, and actually, I would think that perhaps the council would want to consider 12 or 18 months. So I think the Economic Development Fund would be the first place we would look for that short period of time.
Alderman -- excuse me, Alderman Tandem.
Thank you. I'm really encouraged about your progress so far. I've been keeping tabs on it with some of your board people. And I think it's incredibly impressive. So as you know, I support the Art Center and will certainly get my direction to proceed. I think the financials that you provide will be very important. But I think there's nothing but encouragement that I can see at this point. So I will certainly work with you to make this work. If we can get the rest of council behind it, it'd be a really good thing to do. That's my position.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
So, Mr. City Manager, you're going to take our comments tonight and go back and work on a plan, and come back to us at our next meeting? Or are you going to take the ball and run with it and tell us what you did later?
Alderman Rainey, I don't believe the second option makes sense. I'm asking for direction. I think the direction--
Asking for direction, but are you going to -- I would really like to know, I would really like to see this council vote on what your decision is.
Absolutely, and I agree. So if the -- my sense of the council from this discussion is that you would like me to try. And so I think an appropriate motion would be to direct me to work and staff to work with the Evanston Art Center in the next seven days to draft appropriate documents for a short-term loan. I think the only thing that I would ask the council to add to a motion like that would be the duration.
All right. I would like to make that motion and accept an amendment for the duration. I would say 18 months maximum.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson, did you want to speak to that?
Madam Chair--
Yes.
-- Madam Mayor, when you bring that back, could you also bring us some substantive information regarding those things upon which you made your decision?
Certainly. Certainly, Ms. Knighton, our economic development manager is here, and I likely will be asking her to take the lead, working with Mr. Lyons, the chief financial officer over the next seven days. And we will treat this as we would other loans. And we will get the information that we have, obviously, this is a little bit different in that the Art Center has primarily been relying on funds for operations, not for capital. And so I think we'll have to look at that. I think the fundraising that they've done, the, the value of the property with the intended improvements, that's, that's an issue that's been raised yet this evening, but the, with the intended improvements, the value of the property will exceed the loan. And so that is a very positive factor, I think, when the city council would consider the short-term loan, is that there, there is, there will be collateral on a building that will exceed the, that will have a value that will exceed the loan. And so that is a very positive thing. So we would package all of that up, Ms. Mason Cup from the Law Department, I'm sure would be involved as well. So we would have a document for your inspection, the community's inspection, at your special council meeting that has been previously scheduled for next Monday, the 29th.
But, but the information that we're really interested in is, what is it that you're going to base your recommendation on? What information? And we are in second position, so.
And Alderman Rainey, I think that, that some of the comments that were made here, especially Alderman Fisk's comments about the catalytic nature of the investment, the location, all is very positive for the city. I don't know that I could recommend to you an agreement that was longer than 18 months. I think that, that that's another key factor for our cash flow, for our role in a project like this. So I'm kind of writing the staff report as I'm talking to you, but I mean, those are factors that I think will be brought out.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, and you hit on that. The cash flow is important to me, too. I think if, if we're going to be taking a chunk this sizable out of the Economic Development Fund, if it's doable, I'd like to see maybe six-month repayments, some sort of installment, so we can get that money back to work for other aspects of, of our economic development planning and, and efforts. So I'm much more comfortable with the 18 months, and maybe if there could be six months, every six-month installments. And again, I'm not used to seeing generally fully-secured loans that we make, so that makes me a lot more comfortable that it is a, it's a building that's constructed, it will be improved, and at least hopefully there'll be no catastrophe, but if there is, there's real estate to secure the loan, so, thanks.
Alderman Grover.
Just a reminder that these loans are not interest-free loans that we make from our Economic Development Fund, so this, this, this comes back to us plus interest over those 18 months, standard loan terms.
Well, that's part of the direction. Alderman Burris.
Mr. Bobkowitz, I believe you answered this in an email, but I want to make sure that I was correct in what I read. So once the purchase happens, the building will come off the tax rolls almost immediately, correct? Which is a loss of 118, 119,000?
I have a number here. I have a number here from Ms. Knighton, let me just pull it up here quickly. I believe that was approximately the dollar, $117,000.
Per year?
Yes.
Right, okay. So I just want to be really clear. So as part of this loan, could we include in that that it remains on the tax rolls until they finish paying off their loan? I mean, it's, it seems we're doing an economic, with economic development, the reasons why we give out economic development loans is to actually boost our property tax, boost our sales tax, hire people, and we're doing the exact opposite here. We're giving money to actually take it off the tax rolls, which seems a little counterintuitive to me. So again, we're not only, we're giving money away, and we're taking money off, out of our, out of our pockets. So it just, it just seems financially not the smartest thing in the world. So it seems like it may be a good idea to keep it on the tax roll until they finish paying it off. So also, as part of this, if we're going to give out taxpayer dollars, will there be scholarships for low and moderate Evanston residents to partake at Evanston Art Center? And if so, is the city actually paying for those as well, or is the Evanston Art Center going to subsidize those scholarships?
Well, I can talk to that. And I can also say that if we were to have to pay property taxes, then we, the discussion can end right now, because we, we won't be able to service our debt on the building if we are, you know, in addition to that, paying property taxes for 18 months. In terms of the scholarship, yes, that is on the Evanston Art Center's budget. We expect that to grow. In order for us to qualify for a tax exemption down in Springfield, we have to be a charitable organization. We have to offer all kinds of programming, which we do now, but we'll have to offer more free to the community and to all of our constituents. So just to know both those things, we, we plan to do much more, that's why we're moving, so we're able to serve the community in a much more, you know, enlarged fashion, all the community.
Alderman Holmes.
I was just wondering, isn't there a process that they have to go through for the, to come off of the tax roll?
Yes.
It just doesn't automatically happen.
No.
So I, you know, I don't know how long that takes, but I do know that there's a process for, you know, for that.
And Alderman Holmes, I, we have not had a chance to talk in the course of today with representatives from the Art Center. Our understanding from previous discussions is there may be other uses at the, at the center that, we need to talk about that. So I think that the information the Law Department gathered was conditioned on those additional discussions, but we will have them in the next week and have a more complete answer.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Wally, were you just speaking of possibly other uses in the building that are not tax-exempt?
We, we have, and again, I, Ms. Dietrich and I have not spoken today about this matter. I know that there was discussion in preliminary planning for the building, that there might be a restaurant, there might be some sort of shop of some sort, and I have not had a chance to double back with her today to get a complete understanding of that. And so with that information, we'll be able to go back to the Law Department, and that may have some impact on the exemption from property tax.
Right, right, okay.
I, I don't have a complete answer to that.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Rainey. Nora, have you made a decision about where the metal sculpturing department is going to be housed?
No, we have not, we have not decided on that yet. We are looking at it still. There is a larger program for the metal studio that might include woodworking plus casting. And I can tell you that, that we want to keep our metal studio, whether or not woodworking and casting is included, I don't know. But right now, the, the major piece of this is 1717 Central. And I think that we're marshaling all our forces right now, board and staff, to make sure that gets done, because if we lose that building, we don't have a home.
So once that's resolved, you will continue, you will begin working again?
I believe so. That's, that's how I've been directed right now by my board.
Alderman Tendem.
Thank you. I think there are a few other things we need to consider when we're, we're talking about the whole picture here, is that, number one, we've made a commitment to the arts, and I think this is a well-established organization in Evanston with a very, very long history, a very solid support in terms of patronage, and, and obviously now donating, giving money. And secondly, I think Central Street is getting a lot of attention for new development, and it's things like this, amenities like this, that may not be on the tax roll, but they're going to certainly pique interest in developing more residences, more businesses, and everything along Central Street. And that part of Central Street has been pretty dormant for a long, long time. I'm thrilled that this is the type of organization that wants to go in there. I think it's ideal because of transportation, I mean, you know, the perks, all the upside of the whole thing. So I think that's a really important thing to consider. And then also, I don't know that you're exactly, you're not a certificate program, to my, to my knowledge, but you are offering some additional courses, one is culinary arts.
Correct.
And I think, you know, there are some, there's some knowledge to be gained, some practical knowledge to be gained, not just fine art, but things that could help in workforce development and give people skills to move on to more interesting jobs.
Absolutely. That's one, job creation is one of our four main goals for the future. And we will be hiring, and we will be employing additional high school students and, and teaching assistants from the community, so we plan to, to grow that program.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded to direct the city manager to negotiate the terms of an 18-month loan. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Seven to one, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll be back next week.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please? Yes. Madam Mayor, first item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the council meeting, September 8.
Oh, Alderman Rainey, could you re, oh, I'm sorry.
As amended by the city clerk.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Secondly, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, September 15. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and asked your approval of the The bills through September 23rd, $2,601,855.9. We ask your approval of a contract with Schroder &amp; Schroder for the 2014 alley paving project in the amount of $176,738 for the alley north of Leonard and east of Wesley Avenue. Approval is requested for a contract with Lakota, this is off the consent agenda, is that correct? Alderman Wilson, have, did you ask for this off the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Next, that'll be addressed by the committee chair. A 3.3, we ask your approval for a single-source purchase of Davis Street's Streetscape Furniture from Landscape Farms, litter containers and benches in the amount of $51,900. Your approval is requested for agreement with Harris Computer Systems for migration of the Aquus database from Oracle to Microsoft SQL in the amount of $31,500. We ask your approval for a contract with National Power Rodding Corporation for the 2014 manhole lining in the amount of $133,600. Approval is requested as well for a contract with Standard Equipment Company for emergency repair of sewer cleaning vehicle 956 in the amount of $39,518.66. We request approval of the CIPP Sewer Rehabilitation Contract B with In situ Form Technologies in the amount of $230,584. Approval is requested for change order number one with Urban Works for Comprehensive Signage Design Program. The change order will increase the contract amount from $19,720 from $52,270 to $71,990, and that is the sign in front of the city manager, and Alderman Wilson. Next is approval of School District 65 Rock Salt Agreement, $92.95 per ton for November 2014 through 2015. Approval of School District 202 Rock Salt Agreement for the same period and the same amount per ton for the same duration. Next is approval of Resolution 67R14, authorizing fulfillment of terms of the gigabit grant previously awarded to the city from the state of Illinois and selection of an ISP and network operator. We're authorizing, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to further negotiate and execute two agreements with onshore networks for the deployment of the Illinois Gigabit Communities Challenge Grant. We ask your approval for Resolution 71R14, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the Water Rec District for civic center parking lot improvements and reconstruction. Funding is provided by a $750,000 MWRD grant and $500,000 from the parking fund. We ask your approval for adoption of Resolution 72R14, accepting sustainable municipal water management scorecard evaluation of Evanston's integrated water management policies. We ask that you authorize the city, the mayor to enter into a restated employment contract with the city manager, Wally Bobkowitz. Resolution 76R14 is for your approval and is from the mayor, let's see, requesting that we support proposed rulemaking on rail tank car safeties in response to a request for support from Barrington President Karen Darch. Resolution 65R14 authorizes the manager to enter into an agreement with E2C Music School for Space at the Noyce Cultural Arts Center for a three-year lease term, for a three-year, for a three-month lease term. And the following are similar conditions. The city manager may enter into a contract with Ozagi, Samanchi, and Shirley Adams for space at the Noyce Cultural Arts Center, and for Roberta Levin for space at the Noyce Cultural Arts Center, all for three-month lease terms. Ordinance 109014 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. A 16 is ordinance 112014, amends the city code by creating a new Class S1 liquor license for those not-for-profits wishing to apply at the rate of $500 a year. It's for introduction. Planning and Development Committee met this evening and requests your approval of the Housing Authority of Cook County funding request for rehab of Pearlman and Walt Church Apartments in the amount of $150,000 from the city's Home Investment Partnership Grant for 199 units of senior and disabled housing. Both are located at 2300 Noyce Court and 1900 Sherman Avenue. Your introduction is requested for special use for an indoor recreation correction. The committee also moved to suspend the rules, and the committee chair will address action on this matter later. Ordinance 116014 is a special use granted for the Animal Hospital Toiber Veterinarian Services at 1815 Church Street, Central Street, sorry. Ordinance 10514 is for action and grants a special use for a Type 2 restaurant, Blaze Pizza, at 1737 Sherman Avenue. Ordinance 10414 is for action and has to do with extending the time for the Orington Hotel Plan Development at 1710 Orington Avenue and 17171725 Sherman Avenue. This grants a two-year extension to obtain building permits for construction of the 30 residential units above the hotel's parking garage. The Human Services Committee met and requests your approval for Resolution 62R14, authorizing Evanston to support statewide and national ban on non-therapeutic uses of antibiotics in livestock production. Ordinance 10314 is for action, authorizing city manager to negotiate for the lease and sale of 26, oh, this is off the consent agenda, the Harley Clark, uh, uh, ordinance is off the consent agenda. Economic Development Committee, the following matters have to do with Little Beans. Approval of facade improvement project at 430 Asbury Avenue in the amount, a 50/50 cost-sharing basis in the amount not to exceed $30,000. Resolution 69R14 authorizes the manager to negotiate and execute a loan agreement with Little Beans Cafe LLC in the amount of $75,000. Resolution 70R14 authorizes the manager to negotiate and execute a forgivable loan agreement with Little Beans in the amount of $20,000. Next is Resolution 68R14 is the TIF agreement, is this on or off the consent agenda, members of the council? On the consent agenda. Negotiate a TIF agreement with O'Donnell Investment Company for 835 Chicago Avenue.
Don called it off.
I asked, is it off?
Yes.
Oh, this is off the consent agenda. Madam Mayor, it has no recommendations for appointments and therefore I move the consent agenda.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes, Madam Mayor. A 3.2, approval of the contract with Lakota Group for professional consulting services for the park systems evaluation. This was presented at the committee, we had a discussion because we had received an email that had some questions that we wanted answered, the city manager was able to do that and come back, and we did discuss it and decided to move it on to council, so I would move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve it. Mr. Alderman Wilson, did you want to speak to that?
I did, frankly, I just feel like for the amount of money that we're talking about, that there are actually things that we know we need to do, so I realize that this is part of-- this has been allocated in the capital improvement budget, but it's a lot of money, and I'm just not comfortable using it for study when we have specific actual needs that it could be utilized for, so I would prefer to send it back to committee for further review and for reconsideration, reconsideration on whether we should use those funds for actual expenditures, for actual, you know, hard things on the ground.
All right. Is there any further discussion of Alderman Wilson's motion? All right, we'll take the Alderman Wilson's first. Oops, sorry. City Clerk, would you call the roll? He made a motion to-- well, he wants to send it back to committee. And he moved that and seconded it and got a second.
And then just, I guess, to reiterate, the purpose of that would be to reconsider whether or not we should be using this money for, you know, the planning process, or if that would be better used for, you know, the actual needs in the parks, because we have a lot of actual needs, a lot of things that need to be fixed, and we don't need somebody to tell us that we need those things fixed, so.
I think your best bet would be to hold.
Okay, then, hold, move to hold.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to hold it.
With that intention.
With that intention. Okay, Alderman Grover, did you want to--
No, that was--
It's been held.
Okay, Madam Mayor, moving on then to A15. Ordinance 109-0-14 adding Title III, Chapter 31 regarding transportation network providers. City Council recommends, well, actually, we held this in committee, and the, yeah, we held this in committee, and the city manager and staff will come back with some additional information for us at the next meeting, and at that time we will decide if we need a special meeting to discuss this, based upon, I think the question was, do we need to deregulate cabs and deal with it from that aspect, or to proceed as other communities are doing to have some kind of regulations for this new era of transportation? So it's been held in committee for our next report.
Thank you, that completes your--
That completes my report.
Report. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to report ordinance 115014 granting a special use for commercial indoor recreation at 1017 Davis, this is Tier One Training Center. In committee, Madam Mayor, we agreed to move introduction and suspend the rules, which I did, and therefore I move approval.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded for action. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
The motion passes. Human Services, Alderman Burrus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the Human Services Committee and staff recommend adoption of ordinance 103-0-14, which authorizes the city manager to pursue negotiations with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to lease the property and sell the buildings at 2603 Sheridan Road, commonly known as the Harley Clark Mansion.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager, could you address some of the concerns that were raised by the speakers that sent us some comments specifically about the House reverting to the city in the event that IDNR no longer occupies it, and also what the term of the lease would be, how many years that might be?
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, we have, I apologize, let me just pull this up. As far as the term, that is something, I think I have said publicly, that we would look at a 99-year lease for the property, and so unless the council provides other direction, that would be my intent to move forward with. As far as the flexibility, and let me go right to the section, I think it was Section 2, Subparagraph 6, provisions shall be included to allow the City of Evanston first right of ownership of the building should the state of Illinois wish to vacate the building in the future. I think it comes back to price. If the council is looking to receive fair market value for the building or something approximating that, then I think our expectation, but then also have the building revert back to us immediately with change of use, I think is not a reasonable position to negotiate from. However, if the council is looking for less than market value, or as has been proposed, a dollar sale, then I think it's very appropriate. So I think that is a policy question for the council, that you can either direct me through an amendment to this ordinance, or ask me through discussions this evening to negotiate the best deal I can.
My position would be that we ask less than fair market value, a dollar, five dollars, as long as we can have the revision in there, I think that's appropriate. Also, I think 99 years is a really long time, and I would suggest a trial period of 30 years with extensions, 30 years of extensions built into that.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I understand the points, the ideas and the thoughts behind the suggestions that we've been getting over the period of time, and I appreciate them, but one of the things, as I've expressed to some people, is that I feel like, at this point, we're, in a sense, it's like we're negotiating against ourselves, because we don't have an offer on the table. So I guess I'm more inclined to see what the offer is, and I believe that there's someone who's been listening to the comments from the state, so presumably those thoughts and comments will be taken into account, but I hesitate to put additional restrictions on, and maybe in hindsight, I might even hesitate on some of the restrictions we've suggested, because we don't know what the offer is going to look like. The offer could be something completely different than what we're expecting, it could be exactly what we're expecting, it could be something that doesn't line up with the conditions we've put out there. So my inclination is to stay with the parameters we've set out, I think it's a good general outline, it leaves some room. At the end of the day, we're the ones who are going to have to approve or not approve whatever gets put on the table, but if we try to write the whole deal now, you're writing it in a vacuum, and I don't really think that we can do that in a meaningful way. So that's my inclination, is to leave it as is and see what the offer is and then go from there.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm not interested in hamstringing ourselves as we undertake these negotiations with IDNR, and I agree entirely, Alderman Wilson, that we should give the city manager some flexibility, and within that flexibility, I think he and IDNR can be more creative than if we impose a whole lot of terms before we even undertake meaningful negotiations with IDNR. So I'd like you, city manager, to have some more flexibility, I think you're really acutely aware of the community's interest in the long-term ownership of the property upon which the building sits, and retaining that ownership in perpetuity, and that we don't want there to be any other owners for the building except for the City of Evanston and IDNR, and however that works out, I'd really like for you to have some flexibility in making this work for the residents of Evanston to the best of your ability. So, and within that, I think it also gives you perhaps some flexibility to explore what Ms. Klev suggested, the conservation building easement, or Conservation Building Trust, which might also be an interesting, creative way of structuring ownership. But I think how we've drafted the ordinance, the enabling ordinance right now, works for me, and I think it should work to our benefit in these negotiations.
Thank you. Alderman Wayne?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I think that Alderman, I agree with Alderman Wilson and Alderman Grover's sentiment, I think that the community's interest has been made clear, this is obviously a building that we do want to keep in the public domain, and there are lots of different ways to go about doing that, I think that, I agree that we don't want to negotiate against ourselves at this point, and let's see what comes in, but Alderman Grover's statement that we want it to be either City of Evanston building or an IDNR building is my strongest sentiment about this, and how we go about that, let's see what the two parties come back with.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yes, I do agree with that, if it can't be a City of Evanston building, or an IDNR building, then it should revert back to the city. I think part of the problem, for me at least, is that, from the beginning, I supported a lease of the building, I understand from the information I've been able to glean, and that's not possible for IDNR to get their funding unless they actually own the building. The problem is that no one has actually come up to the podium and explained that, other than in very nebulous language of, we don't, we must own the building. That's not enough information for me, because in the end, if we leased the building for 99 years, of course it would revert back to us, because we would still be the property owner. I'd like that, city manager, I'd like you to ask that question during your negotiations, if there is any way for us to continue with our ownership of the building and to lease it out, and for IDNR to get their funding, that would be great. And that's my main concern, and I think that really does reflect, I think, the wishes of the community, the concerns of the community. Again, in my ward, we have a number of buildings that have been privately owned on land that's owned by someone else with very long-term leases, that has worked out for them, but I'm not quite sure what happens when IDNR no longer has use for the building and suggests that another state agency, for example, might come in. So if we go back to Alderman Grover and Alderman Wilson, or Alderman Wayne's suggestion, that it either be the City of Evanston or IDNR, I can stretch that to support that.
Thank you. Alderman Tindem?
Thank you. I think it's good to remind folks that this will require a supermajority of council to proceed with the recommendation of the managers, I think will be a good determination of this plan, but I do question, again, the multiple sources that the last speaker from the state cited, that it wasn't just going to be this money that we had heard of coming through the federal, by way of the federal government, that there were multiple sources, I'm curious as to who those folks are. And secondly, I guess I still wonder if the state of Illinois should be spending $8 million to renovate a mansion on the lake. It's our money, it's, I know we share it in a bigger way if it comes from federal, state money, but is that what our state should be spending money on?
Thank you. That's a tough question to answer. All right, folks, we have ordinance 103014 authorizing the city manager to negotiate for the lease and sale of 2603 Sheridan Road, otherwise known as the Harley Clark Mansion, for action. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next is Economic Development, Alderman Holmes, is that you?
Oh, I guess it is, I'm sorry. This is my first--
You're just getting to all the work tonight.
Yeah, I just, my first meeting was just last Wednesday, so I'm sorry, I haven't gotten into the mode yet. 04, Resolution 68-R14 authorizing the city manager to negotiate a TIF grant agreement with O'Donnell Investment Company for 835 Chicago Avenue, would move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Alderman Burrus?
I make similar comments that I made at Economic Development, well, I'm extremely excited that there's a building will be at Main and Chicago, I'm still troubled by the fact that it's, we did a TIF to begin with, and then even more troubled that we're making a requirement of office space, and because we're making this requirement, it's costing us millions of dollars. Again, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, and so I will be voting against it, but again, I'm glad there's a development going on here, I just don't think we should be giving tax dollars to a very, very wealthy developer.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I agree with most of those comments, generally speaking, this is not the doing of the developer, this is the doing of the city, which really put us in the position. So, that said, that just is a brief explanation of how I'll be voting, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wayne?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope that we pass this tonight, I feel confident that we will, because this is Evanston looking forward to the future. Earlier this evening, we have moved forward in our gigabit grant to create super-high-speed internet, fiber internet, which will come right down Chicago Avenue and connect directly to this building, as well as a number of other users, more than 1,000 users in Evanston. This is really planning for the future, when this corner, which once did have office at that location, which supported daytime use of all of our retail and restaurants in the area, which are lively, but felt the diminution of their business when that office disappeared, this is a chance for us to bring this back, and bring it back with an eye to the types of jobs that are being created, most recently in this, in our community, which are high-tech jobs that need high-speed data. We're providing that, why would we miss the chance to provide office at this location? One of the five locations, which we all know, exist in all of Chicagoland that have both the Metro and the CTA at stations right there, at that corner. This is a really unique spot, and this is a really important thing to do for the city. I think there, it's a risk that we're taking, but I think it's a risk that has very high rewards. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, city clerk, would you call the roll on Resolution 68R14 authorizing the city manager to negotiate a TIF grant agreement with O'Donnell Investment Company for 835 Chicago Avenue?
Alderman Tindem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to call of the wards. Alderman Tindem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to send my deepest condolences to the family of Sappor Katz. Sappor and her husband Martin had half a business on Central Street called Tremaine Gallery, it's art restoration and framing that her son does, and Sappor passed--
And Sappora passed away late last week, she was buried today and she is the survivor of the Holocaust. She's very active in the Holocaust Museum or in Skokie and I suppose the thing that really strikes me and makes this so something to mention is that she was such, she had such a wonderful spirit and such resolve, her endurance and her spirit that carried her through that were remarkable and I do feel that she is just an amazing, amazing woman and I will always remember her for never doubting the good in man and that good will overcome evil. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to remind everybody that it's time for Bike the Ridge. September 28, Anjana Hansen, soon to be Judge Hansen, and our staff have done a great job organizing with Ridgeville and their Fall Frenzy. We're going to have about six food trucks and so many great things are going to happen. Also, there's going to be a surprise announcement by Governor Quinn at our event, I can't tell you what it is, but it has to do with bicycles, so you might want to come out and have fun and bike the ridge. Also, Bike and Roll Chicago has again donated the quad cycle for the event and they'll be delivering it on Saturday, so anybody who wants a ride, come on out and ask.
Thank you, Alderman Burrus.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Thank you, Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to announce to people in the third ward that there's going to be a Baker Park renovation meeting on Wednesday, October 1st, at Lincoln School, 7:00 PM. Please come out, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you, and Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that I too had a chance to attend the Day Day Coleman, Day Days World this weekend, which was a great event, and also got a chance to get down to Robert Crown to the kickoff celebration for Mexican Heritage.
Oh, thank you, I forgot.
Yes, it was also a great event.
Don't tell them.
It's okay. It's just so many things to do on the weekend, but it was a great event to attend this weekend.
Thank you for remembering that. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do have a motion for us tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Grover, did you?
I omitted to mention the Green Living Festival this coming Saturday at the Evanston Ecology Center, it's all day long, the Ecology Center's all spruced up, looking great and there will be all kinds of great exhibits and things to see at the Ecology Center. Right. And thank you to the Evanston Chamber of Commerce and all its partners on the mashup last Tuesday, it was a great event.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss, to discuss an agenda item regarding real estate. This agenda item is a permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act. The exception is 5 ILCS 120/2A, C5 and C6.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.